Good afternoon and welcome to the April eighteenth council work session. Roll call, please.
Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Bozen, Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Greider.
Here.
Ms. Wilder. Mr. Foyce.
Here. Alright, can I get a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor Protam.
Yes, sir.
A motion to approve the agenda as proposed, as well as the minutes of the April fourth, twenty twenty-two work session as proposed.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Alright, first up, we have a discussion of assigning bonus for certified police officer lateral transfers. Chief, welcome back.
Good afternoon. Happy to be back.
Hang on one second. Can you turn up this? Turn up this.
So, without further ado, I'd just like to continue our discussion. Bozen had a few questions. Last week, he noted that since then, he's had the opposite need to meet with Captain Duncan regarding the process that he had. He'd also directed that we have some conversation with city's finance about their debts with the Congress as well. And to revise that the really certain version of our point of view is fascinating. So jumping right into it, the cities, as you see, are not the normal comparison cities that we use to look at as a means to create a viewpoint from a salary perspective or other benefits perspective. We're using eastern Iowa cities, cities that are closest to us, that we compete with for purposes of hiring. New police officers attracting police officers from the citizens. So what you're seeing is the average police officer here. First, I should say, all but two cities, just for the year, have greater than, uh, greater population. So, the purpose is to show that these agencies that we deal with as far as keeping attention is concerned, it's fact that these are the ones that have the most impact, that are doing, doing lateral attention agencies. This is Cedar Falls, Iowa City, Marion, Cedar Rapids, these are cities, O'Wine, Independence, and Cedar Falls. Of these cities, I should say, last week a question came up about the accuracy of Cedar Rapids, sorry, Cedar Falls salary. Tell you that the Cedar Falls salary is reflected of Cedar Falls after the recent restarts, the latter ones. That Cedar Falls, based upon the analysis of our city, is a new business that is reflected as well. Iowa cities, it's reflected as a step three, a new step ladder when we see their police offices. We wanted to give you an idea of what an officer, up to twenty-five years of hours, would receive and.
Received, um, starting pay reflects the paid at the officer with up to five years received. And, uh, when I say up to five years of experience, these cities would credit officers having up to five years experience because of police officers. Their levels of step pay, uh, up to perhaps even five years. Right now, we obviously have fifteen steps. And up to fifteen steps, you'll see in the latter slide, there was two steps in there. So, we don't have laterals, uh, we don't have any lateral program right now. And only, uh, starting salary benefit other than twenty-five cents, uh, now we're going to keep up with police officer.
Chief, one sec. Mr. Bozen.
I just, do you want to wait to the end for questions?
Um, I prefer that, but if there's something that.
No, I just, we'll just refer back to this page. Okay. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, sir. So, as I said, our proposal there, in conjunction with the, whatever the Police Officers Association can be, members of the command staff is moving to remove the first two steps there. And shrinking our pay scale. Um, that, and I'll have, um, you know, others in our group here speak to these things. Um, in essence, because we're competitive in the sense that when we, when we hire someone, not only can they have the opportunity to come in and be pushed up to the appropriate step, but, um, the entered salary stops there. Place us not at the top, but pretty much the exact level of all the cities that we use as comments. That we compete for, uh, new officers, officers that are considering battering other police agencies. So, um, I spoke about this. Prior certified officers would receive credit for years of service and have scale for up to five years, nothing beyond five years. I think this is a really important part to our goal because of the fact that officers that, that we're carrying sitting here don't derive right now a true benefit out of those to boot. We all agree that we want our officers within the department to derive some kind of benefit. Now, this just, uh, makes us able, in our opinions, to compete with other agencies that we intend when hiring the best and brightest and the top people we can for our departments, uh, even with adjustment that we will make, being able to, um, retroactively take care of officers within the department. Fit into these categories. It would only affect five total officers in these two months. Many times, it suggests changes in salary structure and just, uh, it affects a wide suite of, you know, we're a department of a hundred thirty-nine total employees, a hundred and eighteen currently.
Employed with our department, excuse me, I should say, a hundred and sixteen currently sworn officers in our department. So, it would have a very minimal effect. Five officers would have to receive, five existing officers, I say should, we have to receive an adjustment. Weighted skill benefits, senior officers leased most times, you see, about, you're looking at taking care of the folks that we already have here, very, very high.
This, this is not the case. Basically, anyone over, uh, that five-year mark or so wouldn't derive a significant benefit out of these lateral services. But when we move into incentive policies, then that's where you're seeing most of the impact sort of focused there. We want to keep our organization. So, I'll have, uh, I'll have Sergeant Camerata come up with some, so.
I get my teleprompter ready, so. Uh, for those who don't know me, I have a couple of you guys, uh, Rob Camerata, president of the Water Police Detective Association. The three parts of this package that I'm most important here, number one, lateral, lateral transfer package portion of it, um, not only affects bringing in certified officers from other departments, um, but also the desirable for new, brand-new officers to apply here as well. And then the retention bonus portion of that, keeping the officers that we have. And then that last piece of that would be the residency. The five officers that we have currently that would, um, be affected by the lateral transfer portion, or what's seen in the slide here. Once again, it wouldn't bump them up until we hired somebody that would qualify for this. And at that point, upon hiring the new officer that is already certified, coming in as a lateral, then we bump up our current, um, five to that point. So, it's not, if this works, that's what's coming into play. This is, uh, we hired an outside consultant, John Thomas, who spoke at the last, uh, work session. Um, this is what we are looking at. We hired him. Basically, to figure out the cost of this. And we met with Joe Winder this last week, was in a meeting that to talk about some of these numbers. Believe our numbers are accurate. Once again, these numbers don't actually come into effect unless this package works and we start hiring certified officers.
One of the things that's important to note is that with the higher, uh, the higher of an additional officer, again, our, our hope is to be able to hire new officers off of our existing list. We just, uh, you know, we just had a testing session over the weekend. And of the individuals tested, six passed, brought on to, um, the broad end for interviews today. Again, over the next few weeks, we'll get into the backgrounds. And the likelihood, again, of hiring, let's say, more than twenty percent of a group of six folks for, for hire within, within the police department with backgrounds and everything else that go on is very low. So, um, when we look to hire, and we, really important part to hammer home here, is that going from a department that at one time all employed and hundreds of people fly here, to a department where we get maybe twenty applicants, of those twenty applicants, six actually make our list. And of those six, maybe two get hired. Uh, I think we'd all agree that as an administration, we'd like to see a more robust. As a department internally, we'd like to see the best and the brightest people getting opportunities and jobs. And, um, Sergeant Camerata will mention, you know, other benefits of being able to hire the best and the brightest. And we speak to that because he wanted to share the WPPA's opinion on, and I think this is germane to this conversation, talking about only having an impact if we were to hire someone pursuant to this plan. And only having an impact on five people in an agency that should have a hundred and thirty-two total employees, and they're now down an average of eight every year. So, uh, do you want to convey what you share?
I'll just tell you how I got hired. Uh, when I applied, there was over two hundred applicants. And going after the physical agility, the written test, which is what we just did last weekend, we took the top seventy-five written scores. And also passed the physical agility and the fitness interview. So, hopefully we're getting the best and the brightest by some way or another. But, um, we ended up with a list of ten and then a reserve list of ten. We narrowed that, that huge field down to hopefully the best. Problem we have now is we had twenty-one applicants this last testing period. We got a portion of those that showed up this last week. After the written, physical agility, we had six, six left. I started interviewing today. Historically, the next processes that happen weed out fifty percent of that. So, best case scenario, we're going to have six. Or likely, we're going to have three. We've got eight applicants. Do we just want warm bodies? Or do we want qualified, tenured, proven candidates? Pick the best and the brightest. Not only want choices, but in the long run, as far as potential for lawsuits, without the best possible candidates, we're getting certified officers. They've already proven themselves in themselves. We can vet them, we can see their experience. Hopefully get these guys on here. And yeah, I was just talking with the chief. He went over, you and I, a couple of weeks ago, spoke with a group of athletes. I think all of us here, like one person, I understand, three legs, um, was speaking to a group there. It was the first group. And a large portion of them, other than a lot of them, how do we expect to get those people to apply here? If they have the opportunity to work here, make a small amount of money, or work in Cedar Falls, they could considerably more amount of money, make less work. If they didn't do less work, it's also, they can pay less, they won't here. If a smart kid's going to say, I'll make Cedar Falls. I would, I would love to have two hundred people apply against what you have, or to pick them.
I couldn't say that better. Uh, I think this is a unique moment, right? We have this administration and total agreement, we have a dozen more about ensuring that we're able to embrace diversity within this department and be able to hire the best and brightest. And, um, there's no way that a city the size of Waterloo should have to give any of some of the other cities on this list for, uh, for the best and brightest officers to put us in the best situation, the best situation, being one, officers are delivering the services in a manner consistent with the city. Um, although the listing of prices come on here, uh, seem considerably high, but let's not lose sight of the fact that that three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred eighty-five dollars only applies. If we were to hire, let's say, six at this time right now, under this plan, um, the likelihood is that we won't see six people under this plan for some time. Um, I appreciate, you know, Sergeant Camerata saying that we might hit thirty percent, thirty percent is a very high number on people that pass a police test, if they get through a police background license. The likelihood is that we may have to do one or two more cycles of hiring just to get back to, uh, your full strength as a police department. So, the weight scale overhaul, that would have an effect on officers right now. That would have an effect on the five officers that would get, um, an adjustment. That would have a, uh, an effect on officers that were within our department. Before, I should, I should refer to a slide we had last week, in that, I should, last meeting, I should say. And that was when we described how much an officer might get pursuant to, uh, to having a residency bonus, right, in remaining with our department. The incentives that we're asking for, incentives that, uh, I think council would agree, uh, make it prideful for us to market ourselves to people in the city of Waterloo, prideful for police officers to say they want to relocate, um, to the city of Waterloo to be police officers. And yes, one question maybe, or one comment maybe, chief, you opened the, uh, the door for officers to boot. Well, yes, I, I, I did open the door for residency to be outside of the department. But this has to do with recruiting officers from the city. This has directly an influence upon officers, as she has, uh, Sergeant Camerata mentioned, where we have a group of kids from the city of Waterloo that are criminal justice majors that aren't choosing the city of Waterloo for a reason. And the reason shouldn't be five dollars difference in starting salary. We're competing with agencies that are much smaller, have much smaller total budgets and levels. Um, I hope.
Thank, thank you, and thank you, chief. Uh, can we go back to the, to the slide with the, the cities to start with? Okay, so some of my questions is, is, uh, the hourly starting pay is reflects up to five years. So, these are cities that are paying at the five-year mark. Is that correct? Outside of O'Wine, which is the seven-year mark according to their contract, what's stated in here?
Correct.
Because they don't have a five. So, but like in Iowa City where you say top pay is in six years, actually, top pay in Iowa City is ten years. There are six steps. Now, there's, there, let me finish. Um, you get hired in Iowa City as a certified officer, you come in at step three, which is an eighteen-month officer. And then you stay at that step. The next step is, is step four is three years. But you stay at that step until you have three-year seniority to move to the three-year mark. The, the sixth step is the ten-year mark. So.
So is.
They top out at ten years.
Yeah.
Instead of six.
I just need to understand, for purposes of your question, is it saying that we should more mirror Iowa City? Is it the question that every city up here has a significant step difference, or is it that we should not, we should or shouldn't do it? Because perhaps another city does it differently.
Well, it's, it's just, I, I don't, when you reflect that, they top out at, at six years, they really top out at ten. But like, uh, like O'Wine, where it shows that they get a six thousand dollar hiring bonus. Well, O'Wine's hiring bonus is you get three thousand dollars when you get through nine-month probation, and you get another three thousand dollars at the six-year mark. So, where we're given a five thousand dollar hiring bonus for certified officers, it's taken them six years to get to that, to that six thousand mark. So, I think we're more competitive than that. But since these are all five-year salaries, and we're quoting Waterloo's twenty-eight eighty-five, if we adopted this to up to five years for a lateral transfer, and you would come in at that mark, you would technically be coming in at thirty-five, thirty-eight if we kept the fifteen-year, uh, step raises, which would put us the highest paid on this chart. With the, if we go with, if we compress from fifteen years down to ten years, we'd be at thirty-seven, thirty-six for a starting wage, which puts us off the chart.
I think the, the one problem that you would have, and again, it's here, would be that, you know, we're in essence raising the range for the younger officer and then not, you're saying over a fifteen-year mark, stretching it out so that you can't reach top salary until you're fifteen-year mark. Which I will tell you is, in my opinion, uh, a, a too conservative way to look at how we address officer pay when we're out of whack with officer pay in the beginning. Um, I would tell you that, I'll use, for example, West Des Moines. West Des Moines tops out after seven years. And in twenty twenty-seven, they'll be at a hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and thirty.
That I do understand. West Des Moines, Iowa City pays a lot, and can he pays a lot. They also have a tax base that supports those wages. But like on the next page where.
One of the reasons, one of the reasons why you can be kept in some of the cities often is that, you know, our direct competition is for these agencies here, not some like with the cities for comps. But I wanted to have that information available because I think it's pertinent. I think the difference between, let's say, eighty, is it eighty-three thousand dollars a year that we top out at, and a hundred and three thousand dollars a year is significant.
Well, I agree.
Because it's two hours away, doesn't mean you don't consider that as a means by which we, you know, we want to reach out anywhere within the state. We want to reach out beyond the state. To do so, we're in competition with the eastern Iowa cities. We're also in competition with cities in Illinois, Nebraska, Missouri, and other places where, you know, hey, they may offer, you know, a different, a different wage scale, and it may be ten years, it may be twelve, it may be seven. Ultimately, we have to really take a hard look at paying folks coming in because that's what the young folks are putting in. That's what they're saying is an impediment. And that's, I know you agree with that.
No, I, I agree. And I also agree with some of the items that you had in your original presentation, the paying off the, uh, uh, the contracts. You know, the, the, the bonus for the Hawkeye employee or, or students, all, the sick, the sick time, the vacation time. That really is, doesn't really cost us anything.
Yes, sir.
So, I'm, I'm a hundred percent behind, behind that. But if we go to the, if we go to the next slide.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, so, when we went, we just signed your guys, I mean, we just signed contracts, what, two months ago? We, that came before council two months ago. Okay, let's just semantics, but that came before council. And one of the, one of the sticking points for us was the compression from twenty years down to ten years. And then we had, as a council, it, it pushed for the twenty years down to fifteen years, and that's evidently what everything settled on. But the twenty years down to fifteen years, it costs us a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars more money because of, of people getting additional pay raises. The, the twenty years down to ten years would run us about three hundred thousand dollars more. But that's not pension either. Because if you eliminate those bottom two pay steps, the, the nine officers that we've hired in this last year, starting July first, on top of the three percent pay raise, would get another raise of two dollars and forty-three cents an hour by eliminating those bottom two pay steps. And if you take that times two thousand eighty hours, that's five thousand fifty-four dollars, uh, per officer of forty thousand dollars. For those, for the, just the people we just hired, and then we add pension on top of that, which is another ten thousand dollars. And now, we're pushing into the fifty thousand dollar mark, just, just to bring those, those eight officers that we've hired in the last year up if we eliminate those bottom two pay, pay scales.
I, I, without getting into the, um, semantics of each part of each pay scale, I, I tell you this, it, I think it boils down to whether you're willing to look at it and say, as an organization and as a city, that we're not competitive, what we have. And I, I agree. I think the contract was agreed upon, and it did cost us, you know. But I, again, moving forward and talking with, you know, the association, I wasn't, you know, part of the contract negotiation.
Sure.
I, I would have liked to see or have built in some of this, you know.
Me too.
I, and, and I think that that, just because that oversight happened, uh, doesn't mean that we can't come back to the table and look at it from a perspective of what helps not only the police department, Waterloo, as a city. Um, we just can't say that we can't be competitive. The other cities on this list, they had to come up with means by which they met those figures that they, they have given their police officers, and something we can't get around. It is that the cities had made these moves to pay officers differently. We have to be as creative as those other cities. If the argument is we're not being as creative as we need to be, then we can become more creative. But I suggest that we have to, I suggest that we have to look at it like, um, in the long run, we have not maintained. And I, I haven't been here that long, but not maintained. We're not kept with the Joneses for, for lack of a better way of putting it.
Oh, I, I agree with that. My, my, the thing I can't wrap my head around is how we're going to pay for it, number one. Because we just certified a budget, and this isn't in our budget. And, and so on this next page for these, for these officers, for the five officers, if we hire a, a certified officer, let's say, with, uh, two years on the job, would every one of these people get these adjustments in to this point?
Yes.
So, that would, so that would, is thirty-six thousand, three eighty-five. And then if we add nine thousand dollars for the pension on top of that, we're at forty-five thousand, four hundred, four hundred dollars. Because none of these include pension, which is twenty-four point six, twenty-five percent. none of these include pension, which is 24.6, 25% on that.
So, so let me say this, there was, what I started to present in the beginning, before we settled on the presentation that I had two weeks ago, was the savings that you incur, you know, when you hire a certified person versus someone who's not certified. I realized that that number didn't have things like how many bullets you send with a person to the police academy, and how much they have to shoot, how much it costs for gas, to go back and forth. But there were significant savings, you know, maybe not over the five-year period, or balance of dollars. But initially, there's, there's inherent savings that we get, that we have to take into consideration. And that savings comes from hiring someone we don't have to put in this academy, we don't have to, we don't have to use as substitution for overtime, right? Right now, what we do is, we're now, we substitute by hiring people, and that leads to burnout, burnout, we used to be leaving here, and then you got to pay their retirements anyway. So we're losing overtime, we're losing training funds, and we don't have enough training funds to cover all of the people that we have vacancies for right now. So.
But on the wage section of it, if we, if we were to agree to compress the 15 down to 10, that, you can look at that compression scale, and you can look at the overall cost of bringing everyone up into those scales, but then we're not factored in the scale, the overall cost of overtime at those higher rates, we're not factored in the holiday pay at those higher rates. You know, so, I mean, it's, it goes on and on, but one, one thing that didn't get really clearly explained, and I'd like an explanation on, on the residency incentive, and what exactly you're, you're considering there, and, and how we pay for that.
Again, the, here, when you ask me how we're going to pay for things that have a global city impact, I'm coming to city council and giving you the cost of things, and maybe underestimated to a certain degree, cost based upon your last statement. But, you know, once again, I can't, I can't make training money appear, right? We don't have enough money slated in our training budget to train the police officers that we have to handle, that we have to train, I'm sorry, to hire and train, then it'd be, I'd be hard-pressed to tell you where another $340,000 is coming from. Me too. However, you know, I'm coming to city council, and I'm asking city council to consider that perhaps we need to look at other areas to fund these positions, not only to keep them in, not only keep them in the law enforcement, parts of this department that we're not going to have to be trained to do this city, is to, again, consider what I said, and that is, met with kids from U N I, about 40 kids in the room, of the 40 kids in the room, I'm generalizing here, 25% of the kids end up being from Waterloo, 10, 10 of the kids in the room or so, maybe a little less than 10, let's say eight are criminal justice majors, who have a legitimate interest in going in law enforcement, in particular, police. And I ask each person to, you know, to talk about why it was that they weren't considering their city, and had to do with $5 an hour, $6 an hour, $7 an hour. So you have to embrace the fact that change has to come from somewhere. I am the person bringing you the proposition, telling you how much this costs, but I cannot tell you, I cannot tell you that I have this budget of the police department.
No, that's not what I'm asking. What I was asking is, is if we have 40 officers that currently live in Waterloo.
Yes.
And we give them a $2,100 stipend, a bonus, or whatever, because they live in Waterloo. And the original presentation had said it would, it could pay for itself with additional property tax, but the majority of the people living there are already paying property taxes. And that's not going to change.
I would say, I go beyond that, something that was written, and that's the feeling that you get having a police officer sitting next door, the feeling that you get knowing that, you know, and people knowing in your neighborhood, in your community, from time to time, that police cars parked inside that driveway, having lunch, or having dinner, those types, if we had to put a dollar number on that, again, that, that has been done in other cities.
I know.
And we could probably do it, but let's factor everything, and look at, you know, minutia, let's look at all of it.
I'm just trying to wrap my head around it, because if, if we, people want a fireman in their neighborhood.
Yes.
And if we, if we did $2,100 for every officer that lived in Waterloo, a stipend, would this be part of their pay, would this be a bonus, not pensionable? Would this be, I don't understand what, what this is.
I think that that is something that we can go back and talk about, you know, with the Police Officers Association, I don't think we talked about it not being a pensionable item, but I think that's a great idea. And I think that part of the, I think that part of this needs to be, if it's not something that's tenable for city council to consider at this time, we have to have an idea, council's standpoint, on what is, to be able to go from there and then work our way back and say, council, here's something that, pursuant to all the questions that we've gotten so far, is something that maybe meets those specs.
Oh, yeah, I, I agree, I, I think there's a, a lot of items in here that are, that are really workable, I, I do.
Mr. Bozen, I'm going to just interrupt you just for a second, I know we have some other council people, can I come back to you?
Yeah, fine, please.
Sorry.
I apologize.
No, that's okay, Mr. Greider.
So, so I guess, this is, this question for Michelle first. We, hi, Michelle. So we did just certify a budget, that was really fun, we all had a great time. Do we, do we currently have the flexibility for, for this as proposed? I'm ju, just as it is, do we have that budget flexibility for this upcoming fiscal year?
Michelle Weidner, Chief Financial Officer, and I want to clarify something first, because we've had a couple speakers out here implying that I've, you know, looked at their numbers and agree with them, and I am not at that point yet.
I don't think that that was ever...
I am not at that point yet, please allow me to finish, Chief.
I'd like you to tell the truth.
I'm speaking, I am telling the truth. So, don't you dare accuse me of not telling the truth.
Can we just, Michelle's turn?
Wow, yes, thank you. Based on the budget we just approved, I think that you all know we approved using about $3 million of our savings account, just to fund, you know, what we already approved. So it's very difficult to say, sure, let's tack on half a million dollars to that. And I'm, I'm confused, probably more right now than I was before this started, about the slides, because I think the slide, as I understood it previously, the only amount that doesn't come into play until we hire someone is an amount they're showing as $36,000, not the whole $377,000. And I, as I understand it, I don't believe that amount includes the pension and Medicare, which is about 25%. So there, there's still some things we have to work out about that proposal. But, I mean, I think, you know, you know the numbers, I don't think I need to say anymore about what we can afford.
Okay, thank you. And it's not so much a question, but it, this is my concern. And I'm a pro-union guy, I've been a union...
Okay, cool.
Since I've been able to work, I pay my union dues, I have no problem, and I fully support my negotiating team when they come up. But here's my concern, is that we just had negotiations, we just had a budget, and all those things are now closed. I'm concerned about this coming up to us now, because I'm, I am concerned in a way that the fire department is going to see this, and they're going to want something similar, that Public Works is going to see this, and they're going to want something similar, that our librarians and all of our union staff are going to see this and want something similar. I understand that that's not, that's not your field, that's, that's up here on the dais decision. But then we start having these questions about where does the cost stop? I completely agree that we need to attract young people, we need to attract young people to public service, and, and I'm willing to carry water on that for a long time, but I, I do have concerns about the cost, and I do have concerns about just the timing, as well as the fact that, like, this potentially will have other impacts on other negotiating units, potentially. Thank you, Mr. Mike.
Is that it?
Yes, that is.
Sorry. Yeah, if you come to the mic, thanks.
Other departments, I think we should focus on, is that other departments are having the same issues that we're having when it comes to counties. The number of officers that we're down is reflected at the fire department, or at Public Works, and the amount of applicants that we're getting compared to those other departments are not similar as well. If we're talking about residency, will other departments want that? I'm sure that they will. The issue I think we should focus on, though, is we look across the state, when other cities are giving residency, they're not giving residency to, the majority of which aren't giving residency to non-police officers. Police officers is where the residency focus typically comes in. Just my two cents.
Mr. Greider, anything else? Mr. Nichols?
Thank you. So you had, you were talking about the U N I students who are going through criminal justice program on our deciding where they want to go. How are we selling Waterloo, or are we not able to get them past the pay? Because when I was on my ride-alongs, and I'd asked this question to officers, what attracts people to Waterloo? A lot of time came up the experience and the level of criminal justice that they are able to engage in, in the, you know, the training amount that we get here. So how, are we not selling Waterloo enough, or not able to get them past that?
Mr. Nichols, I would tell you that we are. Each, every officer has a responsibility inherently to not only be a part of community policing, but to recruit. Every opportunity that you have to meet with someone on the street, I ask officers to use as a recruiting tool. We are making people aware of Waterloo hiring, we are making, the reason why I attended that was because it's a good civic responsibility for a police chief to be involved in. But the first thing, and the mayor would support this, the first thing I did was began my recruiting diatribe and talked about the positives of being involved in your community in here at the city of Waterloo, and not just to the kids that were, you know, criminal justice students, but all of the kids there that could have potentially thought about becoming a police officer. I gave my telephone number to everyone in the room, and it caused other people from other walks of life in the room to start talking about recruiting, and, and in particular the, the school district, you know. Mr. Botchway from, from the school district said, I can't let the chief steal all our thunder and steal all of our potential employees. So I'm just giving you an example of some of the extremes that we go through. We don't have the type of recruiting budget to go out and send people all across the country, but we, what we can do is brand ourselves as a place where folks want to be. Part of that is pay, part of it is environment. And, you know, we, to, to be able to, and I think Sergeant Camerata mentioned it, to diversify as a department, we have to, to be able to show diversity. We can recruit for diversity directly by offering a salary commensurate with, you know, what they'll be expected to do here in the city of Waterloo. And I think you'd agree that some of the workload that Waterloo police officers have lends to that kind of global experience that they might not have in some of those smaller cities up there. We, we absolutely work hard on recruiting, recruiting for diversity, and we, we have it from the WPPA and from administration, we have a commitment to diversifying a department. Now, what I ask is that the tools be granted to actually aggressively go out and be able to appeal to some of the folks that have a choice. There's a lot of folks that have a choice, there are, you know, police departments across the, everybody's hiring. So what makes us stand out other than this being their home? I'm sorry?
Uh, no, that's okay. Okay, Mr. Charles?
Yes, thank you for bringing this to us. Of course, as I think has been echoed among the council here, I'm in, I want to have diverse officers, I want to have more officers, I want to make sure that we're having a fine department. But my concern is, I am not a contract negotiator, that is not my job. I don't, I'm learning how to do that, I'm new on council, and I just don't feel that this is the forum to be having this discussion right now. I really feel like it should be in contract negotiation, then brought to us on what we allow, because it's just, I'm, I'm not an expert on this. I'm doing a lot of learning about how this process works, but I, I just, that's where I'm at. It is a lot of money upfront, and I understand that we need, something I say a lot is, in order to create value, you have to have the money to create that value in the first place. I get it, I completely understand it. And police department needs a lot of things right now, but the entire city does as well. And I'm just not, I'm not a master at this. So, so my major concern just comes from timing, really.
So if I could give you just a really quick example, I know, Mr. Force, you want to move the meeting along. The, the example would be, we'd love to see diversity within the police department, or increase diversity, but we have a limited number of positions that are still open. We can seize this opportunity by making some of the changes that we need to make, and, and then possibly get a wider batch of individuals to select from, or we can get the last people that actually pass the test, who get on the civil service list, who meet the minimum requirements, and we hire them. We can be selective, or we can hire. I'm asking that outside of these, outside of negotiations, that certain things are, are items that other cities tackle outside of negotiation. Some of them happen during negotiations, certification pays, let's say, for having trainings and other things like that, sometimes happen outside of negotiation. That's not saying that you can't look at this and, and break down some things you're willing to, to look at, and other things that you're not. I'm asking that we move forward from here, that we have some kind of idea, direction from council, as to where you'd like to see it go right now. I know where we don't want to go, and I hear the concerns, but I, I just want, I, I think part of the bringing this to your attention was gleaning from council, their willingness, your willingness, to move forward and accept that we need to make some changes in the structure, and hoping that we would have council's approval to do so. If we do not, I'd like to know which portions thereof we have your support on. And I appreciate all of your questions and comments, I think they've been very valuable and useful.
Thank you. Mr. Charles, anything further?
No, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Amos?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Sherman. One of the things, Chief, for me, you know, I'm listening to my fellow council members, and what they are talking about is, is dollars. You know, we all have a responsibility up here as far as making sure that the citizens are getting the bang for their buck, you know, and for me, if the dollars aren't there, the program's not going to happen anyway, that's pretty obvious. But I also know, being a member of this community, sitting on the Human Rights Commission, talking with Chief Jennings many years ago, when he would come once a month to our meetings, it's always been an issue about recruitment, you know. Being on the Human Rights Commission, the question was, is how come there aren't more people who look like me on the Waterloo Police Department talking about the diversity side of things? But I do remember the chief saying that he couldn't get anyone from the city of Waterloo to apply. He was going around the country trying to get individuals to come to Waterloo to become police officers. And one of the biggest things was the pay. So for me, I support wholly what you guys are trying to do to get those officers to come here, but I also understand that it's going to take money, it's going to take funds, that's the bottom line. You hear about the morale of the Waterloo Police Department? Well, I know for sure, I don't care who you are, one thing that's going to improve morale is pay. So for me, I support what you're doing, it's just figuring out how to get it done. So I say move forward, let's have more conversations, let's get this done so that we have the officers necessary for you guys to do your jobs in the best way possible.
Thank you, Mr. Amos.
One last thing.
Mr. Bozen? Well, thank you. No, I, I have, you know, I've, I've called this residency over, I mean, some departments have a, have a non-residency pay scale and a residency pay scale, you know, so that if you do live outside of Waterloo, you, you make slightly less, and that, that helps pay for the difference for the guys that, that are living in Waterloo, people living in Waterloo, to, to, to fund that residency pay scale. I mean, that's something to look at, but it wouldn't affect anybody that's currently working here, because if everyone working here would be grandfathered, and it would only affect new employees. I like, personally like what Iowa City does, where they, they have a set place where you come in at, no matter one year or 10 years, of, of a certified officer, where we're going to go up to the five-year mark. I mean, so that, that bumps that, that salary up into about $37 an hour, or $75,000 a year to bring an officer on at the five-year mark.
Can, can I address one thing that I said earlier, and I have to correct myself? You, you'd asked me about how many people it would affect, and I said five, that's, I, I want to make sure that I didn't confuse you.
No, I'm not confused, trust me.
Well, the, the, the five total, the five total people would only be affected if we hired, let's say, somebody with five years, this is, you know, if we hired somebody with five years on the job.
Right.
Period. So I said everyone, it would only affect, say if we hired somebody with three years on the job, then, but below that three-year mark, it would affect those people.
Right. This is a maximum if we hire someone with five years on the job.
Yes, sir.
And, and I understand... And, and I understand that that would cost us around $45,000 with pension. But the rate, the wage compression is, is where we got to make the money. Where we got to, where you'd have to figure out where to pay for it. Because that, that's, that's a tremendous amount, especially for the younger officer. And we have more younger officers than older officers basically now as this turnaround's coming. So the wage compression in itself would, would, would really, like I say, if the overall, overall wage scale, overhaul of the wage scale is $257,000, $64,000 on top of that is the pension. So that, you know, that, that puts us, you know, almost 310, $320,000 just for the wage overhaul. You know, not, not counting, like I said, the eight, eight officers that we hired in the last year, it's going to cost us 40 some thousand dollars just to bring them up $2 and some odd cents an hour, plus their 3% raise to life first. So there's a lot of things in here I like, I really do. Number one, we got to figure out a funding source. Number two, we got to figure out how to sustain it. Because you can say, we got ARPA money, we got some federal money, we can, we got cash reserves that we can look at to fund this, but then we have to sustain it for years to come. And that's where, where we draw the line. Because when we drop $3.5 million or three, over $3 million to balance this budget, we're in that much of a hole next year. And then when, when that ARPA money's gone and the money we're using to balance the budget is gone, then how do, how do we, how do we address managing this budget with that much less money coming in? And that's all I have to say. I want to thank everyone for all, all of their work.
Thank you, sir.
Like I said, there's a lot in here I like, I really do, so.
Thank you, because I think it caused us to really take a good, hard look at things beyond the numbers and be able to present something that actually makes a little more sense. One more thing you want to?
Mr. Nichols, really quick, sorry.
Hey, so we were, I, I was kind of mulling some things around in my mind and it come back to something I had been talking about before with some officers as far as how to pay for the lateral transfer. And is there any flexibility in utilizing funds we use for new hires to pay for some of the lateral transfer funds, especially if the pay is kind of the sticking point? If instead of a $5,000 sign-on bonus, if it seems to be the pay or money that is the incentive, why not make that $10,000 be within the whatever savings you would be, you would have from hiring a new officer?
And I'll be quick. The, in conversations that I've had with you guys separately, you know, I've, I've stated that in the beginning, that's how we looked at it. We looked at it as, you know, maybe giving, increasing the total number of bonus dollars that we give. But there are other things that, that come into play that the P P A brought to our attention too. And that's, you know, what's the effect that it has on retention and retaining those people who don't touch any of this? And they were willing to slim down their sort of focus on us to just the people with the top 10 years or fit into 10 salary steps, which was, I mean, again, we, we've come to consensus on that. So I did consider that first. I was initially proposing that we do a larger, significant, you know, portion of the money that we use in an outlay cost for training, for other things. But we went with this because we had to address the retention issue in addition to, you know, the attracting people here. So that takes money and we didn't want to use some of the monies that you're suggesting in, in a way that wasn't consistent with taking care of retention.
It just seemed like that would be a way to do it within budget, or at least that part of it, within budget.
Do we have?
Couple minutes, yep, yep. I was.
Sorry.
No, 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 no.
Tore an ACL last week, so I'm a little sore. So my name's John Thomas again, I'm the consultant that W P P A hired, I worked with the chief. And I guess I, I want to answer the question because your, your question, and I appreciate you being a Union guy. The question is, why are we doing this now, right? Negotiations actually start in six months, why are you waiting? And the market and the demand is really what made everybody have to do these things mid-contract. When Mason City redid their package, Charles City was looking at losing 30% of their police department. So then they opened up their contract and then All Wine said, oh man, things are going to happen. We got to open up ours. The reason I can tell you why to consider this now is because everything takes time. If you wait until the W P P A bargains a contract in the fall, it goes into effect next July 1, you put the chief 16 to 20 months in the rears on trying to pull those applicants. I want to also give you an idea of what's going on around the state, right? Because residency, you said, you want, chief just has to let go of residency and now you want to incentivize it. The residency changes, historically, it was always live where you work. And the change in that is spouse, significant other has a job, let's meet somewhere in the middle and both sides be able to commute. I want to make sure though too that it doesn't get lost. And I was just double checking with Sergeant Camerata that, you know, parcel this out. Like, it doesn't have to be an all or nothing. How do we find, how do we pay for it, right? If you figure an officer with wages, benefits, pension, everything else costs you 100 grand, they're historically running eight to 12 in the hole. So really, the, the simplest answer is, and I don't want to oversimplify it because Michelle will beat me later in an email. But the simplest answer is, you don't get to hire to full strength. And he hasn't been able to do so during that time. But if you look at, we talked about, by the way, I want to compliment Michelle. I know there was a little tension earlier. Michelle's been good work for, with me, I've sent her lots of spreadsheets, we had a good Zoom call the other day. Am I going to tell you that I'm within $300? No, I might be $1,300 off. What I'm not is $13,000 off. My costs, it's one of the things I do very well. And that's one of the reasons I get along well with your labor attorney. But if you talk about what your comparable cities are, right? Those cities that are 50,000, 60,000, 80,000, and you look at all their wage scales, they're all on the 10s. Davenport's still at 22. They've already had discussions on how they're going to get theirs down. Sioux City was way high, they've tried to get theirs down. And so really, that eight to 10 is really kind of the sweet spot. But I certainly understand why the costing is concerned. And I just want, last thing I want to touch base on is why hire a certified officer? So I teach at the I L E A, at the academy, every basic class, I teach driving, some other stuff. I want to give you a great example, right? You've got six people in the pipe. Let's say you get to send three to the academy. Academy graduation is Thursday. An agency fired an officer on Saturday, three days before graduation. They've got 40, $50,000 in salary and wages and costs to train him, let go. Another agency fired an officer in the fourth week. And there are officers that are doing things which are not tolerable and which they deserve to be fired for. But I want to make sure you understand that just because you get three people to send the academy, there's no guarantee you ever see the fruition to the road. And then as a training officer, you have to account for the human factor. Because your field training officers are tired of having people in their cars. And it wears them out mentally and morale and things like that. So if you can hire, and actually, I was very impressed when I looked up at the board, the five officers, you know, there was four years' experience, four years' experience, one year experience. In the last three years, you've been able to hire some certified officers, which is better than the odds because a lot of agencies haven't. So you have a great schedule, which I applaud you for doing. Because that's the number one thing that if you look at all the H R things, millennials and law enforcement want a great schedule. So I do think that this wage package does make sense. But I think chief has to know right up front, right? The budget's certified, how do you pay for it? And I think the answer is, you can't fill all your open spots. Thank you for your time.
So I think, thank you. And thank you, chief, and the rest of the, the force that are here today. One minute, so time me because I don't want to go over, we're, we're way over. Mr. Greider is giving me evil looks, but thanks, we had the timer right there. So this is what I do and I understand why you're bringing it now. Because I, I've done the same thing. If you paid any attention with the Waterloo teachers and support staff, they got pretty significant raises. But that took months and years to get to that point. So what I would like to see, and I think what I'm hearing, and shake your heads yes or no, council, is we, we, we want this to move forward. There are still some nuances, I think, if we can have more. And the spreadsheet thing, I, I understand completely, so it's good that we're, you all are that close. I think sitting down and having council or Michelle look at that, you know, and getting the numbers to us and getting, and reflecting accurately where we might be. So that way, we're, we're not playing guessing games. So we know really accurately what this could cost. And, and doing with some of the residency things, I think what this could do, as Mr. Greider said, could open up the door for others. And I know the, I know the whole thing. I didn't live in the town I worked in for, for many years, but I also know that, that's a, that's a big thing. We do want our officers, I just want to make sure, once we do something like this, that the other people, that, that we could potentially look at this doing citywide as well and having that. So I would like to see H R involved with this as well. From, from Mayor Protem's, Ray Foyce, that, that's what I would like to see, so.
So just to be clear, council's instruction here is to get the fiscal impacts that we had not addressed here that were brought up today. And to have that, run that through finance. So finance brought some things up that hadn't been brought to my attention prior to, to being here. And to have that quantified, bring that back in a form that updates you on those items.
I think, yes.
That's council's direction.
I'm looking at your, I'm, I'm making words for you, so you tell me if that's. And I think if there's anything further, then we will reach out. But I, you know, I, even something to think about is a graduated residency scale. You know, when, like, if they've lived here for zero to two years or two, three to five or something, bump up that percentage, you know, that might be something as, that longevity piece, that retention piece might be something to look at from my perspective as well. But thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you all for your attention and your input.
All right, Mr. Greider, I am so sorry, we're, I know you have some guests that are here as well. So I apologize to, to your, your people. So if you want to, go ahead and get started.
Okay, so in January of 2020, back when I was fresh and chipper and fair-haired, we passed a resolution as the city council unanimously to declare a climate crisis and to begin to work the city towards a reduction of 45% of our greenhouse gases by 2030 and reaching net zero emissions by 2050. So that was two years ago and we are moving closer and closer to that goal. There will be other climate action plans that we will be discussing this year. But one of the big things that we can do is how we get our electricity. It's one of the things that the city has a fair amount of say over. And so I have proposed this resolution, but I am actually going to stop talking because I have two experts with me. Carrie Johansson and Steve Guyer are with the Iowa Environmental Council. They are experts on energy policy and how to do these types of things. They were instrumental in helping Des Moines become the first city in Iowa to do this. So I'm going to turn it over to them. I did let them know that they should present about 20, 25 minutes and then we would take questions at the end, just to keep everything flowing, if that's okay with the rest of council. Awesome. So Steve and Carrie, I'll turn it over to you for introductions and to go.
Great, thank you so much. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome, thanks. Okay, great. Well, I am going to start off here by seeing if I can make this screen share work. All right. So good morning, everyone. We, good morning, it's late afternoon at this point. Thank you so much for having us at the meeting today. We want to talk to you today about moving Waterloo to a 100% clean energy vision. As the councilman mentioned, my name is Carrie Johansson. I'm the Energy Program Director with the Iowa Environmental Council and I've been working in energy policy for about 15 years in a variety of venues. At the federal level, I worked for the Iowa Utilities Board for a number of years and I've been with I E C now for about, about five years. My co-presenter will be Steve Guyer. He's our Energy and Climate Policy Specialist at the council. Steve worked for Alliant Energy for about 10 years, for Mid-American Energy for about 10 years. And then he has run his own solar business for about 10 years as well. So Steve is our expert on many things, energy and energy systems. So the Iowa Environmental Council, if you are not familiar, we're a nonprofit, non-governmental organization focused on two main areas of work, clean energy and clean water, along with land use. Of course, our clean energy work is closely tied to climate and our current climate crisis and transitioning Iowa to 100% clean energy. In our work, we do policy, we work on policy, we do research and advocacy, education and outreach. And we currently have 100 member organizations and businesses across the state of Iowa. So the reason that we are talking to different cities about local clean energy commitments and the reason why it makes sense for locals, for locals to be the ones acting on this, we're well aware of, of the lack of action at the state level on this very critical issue at this time. There's really not much of anything going on at that level. Federal efforts to address climate are also somewhat stalled out, though we hope to see more action there that could bolster local efforts. That, that also has not moved forward. We're seeing the communities that are really at the forefront of climate change impacts are also stepping up to take a leadership role in addressing and passing the policies that are going to help us tackle climate change, including over 180 cities nationwide that have committed to 100% clean energy. Councilman Greider mentioned Waterloo's 2020 Climate Crisis Resolution. We think this fits very well into that resolution from 2020. The International Panel on Climate Change, just a couple of weeks ago, came out with a pretty dire assessment of where we're at in terms of our emissions and our need to reduce emissions. So in 2020, the resolution that was adopted committed to a 45% reduction of greenhouse gases from 2010 levels by 2030, net zero by 2050. Net zero means, you know, the amount of emissions that are being put off into the atmosphere is the same amount that are being absorbed by Earth. That's a pretty hefty place to get by 2050, but it's absolutely critical that we do achieve that. So the I P C C's most recent report said that to limit warming, warming to 1.5 degrees Celsius, we need to reduce coal electric generation 82% from 2019 levels by 2030. The continued use of coal in Iowa's generation makes the local goal that you have set and the, these international targets really more difficult to achieve. And Steve's going to talk more about the coal that's in our energy mix and, and the ways that we've, we've moved forward and the distance we still have to go. I want to talk a little bit about the specific type of resolution that I know that you are considering that is structured on 24/7 carbon-free energy. It's really the most up-to-date and most genuine decarbonization commitment that local governments can leverage to be able to act on climate. So it used to be that a 100% renewable goal, you could say, okay, well, you know, we're using fossil fuels for this chunk of time. We're, we're producing enough renewables in this chunk of time to cover that up. You know, we can't really keep burning fossil fuels for energy and, and sort of cover that up with renewables. The, the fossil fuels have the impact they're going to have. That, that's having a detrimental impact and they're increasingly expensive for customers as well. So a 24/7 resolution says that at any given moment, the electricity being delivered to customers in Waterloo would be 100% from zero emission sources. I'm going to play a quick video for you here that just talks a little bit more about what 24/7 means.
Imagine a community powered by 100% homegrown electricity. A resilient community that harnesses the power of the wind and sun, saving money and making businesses more competitive. Now imagine that community is yours. Across the U S, businesses and governments are setting 100% clean energy goals. Wind, solar and storage technologies are the foundation of these targets and are now the cheapest source of generation available. But not every 100% clean energy resolution is created equal. Today, when we flip on our lights, the power likely includes electricity from renewables, but also power from coal and natural gas plants. A true 100% 24/7 renewable vision means the available electricity at every given moment comes from a renewable resource. No matter when a home appliance is turned on, an electric vehicle is charged or an industrial facility powers up, a 24/7 renewable system would provide homes, businesses and transportation with clean, emission-free power. How do we get to 24/7 renewable? power. How do we get to 24/7 renewable? We must greatly increase our clean energy resources and ability to store renewable energy so we can use it anytime. We must use our energy efficiently to power more with less, and we must phase out fossil fuel generation. How does 24/7 become a reality here in Iowa? Mid American Energy says it's on course to generate renewable power equal to 100% of its Iowa customers' use. But instead of investing low-cost solar, storage, and energy efficiency to complement its wind fleet, Mid American continues to run its five coal plants to overproduce its expensive, dirty power to sell to utilities in other states, while Iowa customers pay higher bills to keep plants running. This means Iowa customers are still using some power from the coal plants and not really getting the 100% renewable energy being promised. Without a transition plan, fossil fuel energy will still be delivered to Iowans and sold out of state by the utilities. Iowans shouldn't have to pay to send dirty power out of state. A 24/7 renewable goal is a real 100% goal, built with consistent commitments, meaningful action, and ingenuity. No offsets, no coal plants, no natural gas. Our state is a national leader in renewable energy. In 2019, wind energy passed coal as Iowa's leading electricity source for the first time ever. Iowa's solar capacity is poised to expand greatly in coming years, but we need more to get us to emission-free, clean power whenever electricity is demanded. Iowans, businesses, and local policymakers can chart this course. Let's grow our renewables, retire polluting energy sources, store excess clean energy for when it is needed, and save energy by increasing efficiency. Let's start planning today. The clock is ticking. 24/7 renewable power can be our future. It's time to get to work.
Okay, let's see if I can stop this and go back to, yes. This presentation here. All right. So that explains a little bit more about, you know, the fact that, yes, we we have, you know, some of our utilities are saying that they're moving towards 100% renewable energy, but we still have a lot of coal operating in the background. We need to move to the next level to really get to 24/7 renewable energy. Iowa has abundant wind and solar resources. There is absolutely a transformation that needs to happen in our power grid with storage solutions. But to get from point A to point B, we need a plan, and we need we need bold policies and policymakers that are going to set the direction and say, this is where we want to go. We can't plan on, you know, continuing to use fossil fuels indefinitely if we're going to meet our climate goals. So in addition to, you know, climate obviously is a major issue here. There are also great benefits to clean energy that don't have the climate and health effects that we see with coal plants. Investing in renewables at the local level drives high-quality local jobs, electricians, insulation, all kinds of clean energy jobs that are out there. We have more information on that that we can share. New clean energy resources, and Steve will go into this more, are cheaper than operating existing plants. And Mid American customers can save $1.2 billion by retiring their existing coal plants by 2030. The more cities that make this commitment, as Des Moines did, as we hope Waterloo and some other cities will do, both in the state and nationally, more cities are looking at this, will accelerate and lower the cost of the transition. And so, you know, Des Moines was the first city in the U.S. to pass this kind of resolution back in January of 2021. We've seen a couple of other cities get on board. Isica, New York, South Lake Tahoe, California have adopted the goal. They're they're on their way to implementation there. We have several large tech companies in the state that have made 24/7 carbon-free energy commitments. Google and Microsoft both have this kind of commitment. Both have really large footprints in the state of Iowa. We've seen the Biden administration issuing an executive order for the federal government to procure 50% of its electricity from carbon-free energy sources by 2030, with the entire nation off of fossil fuels by 2035. There are also international efforts ongoing, the 24/7 Carbon-Free Energy Compact at the United Nations, and many other national, international efforts to really move us to the next step of carbon-free energy. So for some more detail and background, I'm going to turn it over to Steve Guyer.
Thanks, Kerry. Good afternoon, everyone. So I'm going to start by talking about a study that we had performed by a company called Synapse. We actually filed the report for the company that they produced with the Utilities Board as part of the Utilities Board looking into Mid American's resources and what resources are actually necessary. That's an ongoing docket. It hasn't resolved itself yet. But the results of the report are important. It was a comprehensive analysis performed, and what it looked at is how could we do this differently? Do we actually need to run the coal plants? And what they found was that even with ensuring reliability, which of course is important, you can in fact do it differently. If we had wind, solar, storage, and energy efficiency, you could actually eliminate the coal plants, and most importantly, you would actually save Mid American Rate Payers money. That 1.2 billion, by the way, was actually on the loan. The analysis actually demonstrated that it would be between 1.2 and $5 billion if this actually were to occur by 2030. Importantly, too, we need to look at what is the current plan as far as when will the coal plants retire? And recognize also, the coal plants will retire. It's merely a matter of timing, and when should these plants actually close? Currently, Mid American actually has not really divulged any planning. They just have one number, which says that they will close all the coal plants by 2049, less than transparent and also not entirely helpful. But importantly, let's go back to the IPCC, because the report that came out, and I think it's important for us to understand what what the actual net zero by 2050 means. As Kerry mentioned, you know, it is basically saying that that you have to remove or sequester as much carbon from the atmosphere as you put into the atmosphere. But recognize, that's talking about a global situation, all emissions from every sector of the economy and every company in every country. You know, it's not just focused on, for instance, what Mid American has set as a goal. And that's important because what the reports by the IPCC really says is if we don't take care of the energy situation by 2030, there's very little chance of actually meeting the 1.5 degree C warning goal. And in addition, if that isn't met, then it means that meeting that net zero just shifts the burden onto other sectors. So certainly, what we are looking at is something where communities can actually get in the driver's seat and motivate action. Kerry?
She's not on anymore. There she is. And she's muted.
So let's look at the greenhouse gas emissions in Iowa. So this has been going on, as you can see, in fact, a little before that. But this chart just shows from 2011 to 2020, and looking at three primary sectors. So it's looking at electric generation, it's looking at residential, commercial, industrial, in other words, the businesses, the homes, the buildings, and transportation. The sector that's not showing on here, which actually is Iowa's largest sector, is actually agriculture as far as greenhouse gas emissions. And you'll note that in this timeframe, certainly the electric generation from 2018 to 2020 was seeing a rapid decrease. And these reports are issued every year, but they're a lagging report. They're one year behind. So the 2021 information will actually not be reported until December 31 of this year. When that report is issued, that electric generation number that you see down at 17.07 will actually jump back up closer to somewhere around 25, largely due to the increase in coal generation that happened in 2021. Kerry? So let's look at Iowa's generation mix. And we have seen progress. And so let's go back to 2008 to sort of set the baseline for where we started. At that point in time, you know, almost three quarters, 74% of our generation mix in Iowa was actually coal generation. Wind was very little, only about 8%, a little bit of natural gas, nuclear basically at 10%, and others. And so others, everything from biomass to hydro, et cetera, all accumulate within to other. Now, 2021, and I know, I'm sure everyone's seen the the headlines, et cetera, in terms of Iowa's wind generation and how much it actually is providing for Iowa. So in 2021, that was actually 57%. That's a slight decline, by the way, from 2020, where it was actually 60%. Again, percentage is all based on the total generation. And how did that actually decrease? Well, it's because coal generation, although it's markedly down from 2008, it did increase a little bit back in 2021, back to 32% of overall generation. Natural gas have increased. There have been a couple of combined cycle plants that have been built within the past 10 years that actually has increased that. But even in 2021, that was down. Natural gas prices actually drove more coal being generated, and the natural gas production actually went down a little bit. With the next one, Kerry? Let's look at Mid American, and specifically, the irony I find anyway is that the state wind generation is pretty much the exact same as Mid American's wind generation as far as their overall resource mix. So in 2021, again, 57% came from wind, 30% came from coal. That's an increase, by the way, from the previous year of, I believe, 22%. So again, 2020, due to the pandemic, not as much going on, but 2021 seeing that rebound. Natural gas, only 3%, nuclear, 10%, which is a pretty constant, I guess, number for Mid American. And by the way, that's coming not from obviously any nuclear plant in Iowa, which we don't have any anymore, but actually is coming from Quad Cities Plant over in Moline. So what generation actually do the utilities generate, and what do they classify in terms of its customers? And it can be divided primarily into two categories. One is the the amount that's sold to customers, and you'll see that in the green. And so you'll see Mid American's low growth that's occurred over time. It's not showing the year. It should be showing the year there. Let's see, what is that, 2020? Yeah. So from 2016 to 2021 is what this graph is showing. And importantly, then in red is the other major category, which is utilities will sell energy to other utilities. Those are largely going to be out-of-state entities, and it's what they classify as sales for resale. This is a number also, you'll notice that basically for Mid American, by the graph, has been increasing. So I think the overall low growth may be looking at roughly a little, certainly not the same percentage growth rate that they've seen looking at their exports or their sales to other utilities. In fact, in 2021, that actually is 36% of the energy they generated went to other utilities out of state. If we look back at 2016, that was down at 27%. So you're seeing a marked increase in terms of how much is being generated for out-of-state entities. So the question Iowa has liked to ask, and I've been asked before, is, well, why are we seeing an increase in wind and solar generation? And it's fairly simple. It all comes down to cost. Wind and solar are in fact the cheapest form of generation now. And recognize that this graph is a dark graph, but I know a lot of people will say, well, if it wasn't for the subsidies, wind, for instance, would not be viable. But that's not actually the case. This is actually a chart showing unsubsidized rates. And so even at an unsubsidized rate, or in other words, no tax credits, that those are still the cheapest forms of new generation. You'll also see they layer on a little bit of existing generation. That's what those little gold diamonds are. And even if you look at existing generation, that the new solar and the new wind is actually cheaper as a resource than than any of the fossil assets, new or old assets. And pass it back to Kerry.
Thanks, Steve. So you can see that the economic case is there to be made. And obviously, the environmental case and the case for the impact on local communities and people who live in those communities is there. So we are really encouraging local governments to show leadership in this space where leadership has been lacking in some other areas. Carbon-free electricity, as been said over and over again, is absolutely fundamental to reducing greenhouse gas emissions in order to tackle climate change. Now, in America, one in three Americans lives in a community that has committed to 100% renewable electricity. We've got resolutions in a really diverse set of communities, Des Moines, Minneapolis, Salt Lake City, La Crosse, Fayetteville, Arkansas, many others of all sizes. And we know that policy drives innovation. The 24/7 renewable policy is one that we really think can drive that innovation to the next place we need to go. We still have a long way to get there. And we're excited that Waterloo is looking at providing leadership in this space. And we, you know, would love to work with you going forward.
Okay, thank you. And Kerry and Steve, I apologize. Kerry, can you send this presentation to me so I can share it with the rest of council this evening? That's my bad.
Absolutely.
So I think, Mr. Greider, and to Kerry and Steve, I think, as I was looking over what Des Moines has done, it discussed the partnership with Mid American. And has that happened? Because it says in the article, it talked about Mid American was included in the process to write the resolution. Has that happened for us at all?
So we used the resolution based off of Des Moines, so they were included in in that aspect. Kerry or Steve, do you have any more insight on that one?
Um, yeah, I mean, that was that was a part of conversations, I think, that happened as the resolution was going through the process. So certainly would, you know, think it would make sense to have a conversation with Mid American in your process, if that's what you, to do, if that's what you feel to do due diligence that you ought to ought to do as well. But yes, like, like you said, they they were involved in the discussions in the Des Moines resolution.
Okay. So I so I think that our timeline and in this resolution, it's a much more aggressive timeline than what Des Moines has, and that's concerning. In the fact, you know, I'm not sure where we came, where 2030 came from, other than it's fits a little bit into our, our, you know, eight and eight kind of stuff. But if Des Moines can't get this done with the resources they have, I'm very concerned that we're us being more aggressive without the without the discussion. Because what I'm hearing is the resolution modeled after Des Moines, in which Mid American was was a conversation, that that's good. However, I want them, and I would like to, I believe we would all probably like to see them here because many of us got an opportunity to tour the solar facility just a few months ago, you know. And and I know when we heard, we heard from them, it was the commitment that we have. I know we have, if you wanted to come up and speak at all, I am not pressuring you. I'm, I just, I see your emblem on your on your shirt, you know, and you taking notes. I don't, I don't want to commit you to to coming up and speaking, but inviting you the opportunity.
Sure. Real quick, Jeremy Sorenson, Business Account Manager for Mid American Energy here in Waterloo. That's the main reason we're here. So we really like to partner with you. That's what we're looking for in this. So, you know, if council chooses to move forward with this, we want to be part of this plan and part of that. That's what we did in Des Moines.
Okay.
That's why we're here, listening. So
Appreciate that.
Moving forward, we'd love to be part of it.
All right. Mr. Chiles?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Jeremy.
I will second your concern. Mid American, if you don't know anything about me, I'm very pro-green, two electric cars, getting solar panels soon. But I really want to see the conversation happen between Mid American and the city. I would like to refer this back to the mayor's office to have those conversations. I think it needs to start there before it comes to us.
And I think, Mr. Greider, and, you know, our our guests on and having that conversation with
with the mayor, whomever, would be a good start. Mr. Greider, did you have anything else that you wanted to?
Yeah, so we have another work session scheduled for May 2nd, where we're going to have some Des Moines officials come on and give us more information. I am more than happy to speak with Mr. Sorenson, sit down with the mayor at some point on that conversation, and bring everyone along for that one, with the commitment of doing what we need to do on this item.
I think you have a supportive group. I also know that I think we want to be, we want due diligence done, I think, for everybody in this case. So any other council comments, questions? Okay. Steve, Kerry, thank you both for your time, and I apologize, that's my fault that we, I kept you a little bit later than you anticipated, so thanks for waiting for me.
Okay, Mr. Bozen, you are up with discussion on compensation of all non-bargaining positions.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I'm bringing forth a draft resolution for further discussion as it pertains to non-bargaining employees. Our bargaining employees, do they negotiate on a regular basis? And our non-bargaining, sometimes get, you know, they, we try to mirror at least the pay bump that they get, but we don't do that always. And this isn't just, this pertain to the rank and file, it's going to be, it pertains to department heads, division heads, and then, and then all of the other non-bargaining employees. So the draft resolution, whereas employees are the city of Waterloo's most valuable asset, and whereas due to the pandemic, private sector pay has increased significantly, making it difficult for public sector employees to recruit, hire, and retain employees, and whereas the city of Waterloo is experiencing difficulty attracting candidates to employment positions, and Black Hawk County is studying its compensation system in an effort to stem a steady stream of employee resignations, and whereas on April 16th, 2012, and June 18th, 2018, the Waterloo City Council voted to reduce the recommended pay increases for non-bargaining employees, and whereas failure to approve recommended pay increases for non-bargaining employees has caused non-bargaining pay to fall behind similarly sized cities and created a wage compression, and whereas the method for determining and approving pay increases for non-bargaining employees needs to be transparent and equitable across all departments and positions, now therefore be resolved at City Council of Waterloo as Iowa as follows. The funding be identified to pay for a compensation study, including potentially using American Rescue Plan Act funds. That the Human Resource Department identify, hire, and assist an outside company with conducting a compensation study for non-bargaining positions. That study commence by and be completed during fiscal year 2023, so we have a year and three months to do it. And the policy be established for determining non-bargaining pay increases, and that the increases be approved by the Human Resources, Human Resources, the Chief Financial Officer, Mayor, and confirmed by the City Council. Now, every department has some non-bargaining employees. The Police Department, I believe they have six. I mean, you have, you have the chief, the assistant chief, you have, you have three captains, and then a couple of civilian employees that are not, at least one that's non-bargaining. Fire Department has six. So we're not looking at a lot of employees, but I really think that we need to take it, just take a hard look. Because of the pandemic and because of the private sector pay escalating the way it is, if we can identify some funding sources for this, I think it's important. We had a discussion on the employee handbook not too long ago, and part of that employee handbook that I brought up at that time, you know, is I truly believe that all compensation, money and benefit changes, they need to be brought before the council. Currently, right now, that once everything's set in place, the mayor can give pay raises that don't come before this council, and he has in the past. You know, we need contracts for our, for our division heads, just like we're going to look at one today, and our department heads, our division management department. I think we should have an employee contract for all of those people that outlines everything in that contract as far as pay, benefits, vacation, and that. And one thing that's really bothered me that we've done to non-bargaining employees, and it affects some other areas, is we used to get 96 hours of sick time upfront, every July 1st, 96 hours of sick time. And now, it's eight hours a month, starting in July. And I truly think we need to front-load sick time for our non-bargaining employees, and I think we need to front-load sick time for any employees that aren't getting it, because if you, God forbid, you have an illness or something that comes into July, you're already into your bank, or you're doing alternative time for compensation to get out of it. But that's just some of the things that happen to non-bargaining, because they don't have a union representation to put the language in a contract and set that language. So I plan on bringing this forth before the council soon, and I hope we can get your support and show the support for our non-bargaining employees as much as we show for our bargaining unit employees. Thank you.
Questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Greider.
So not a question, but Mr. Bozen, I completely agree that we should put sick time upfront, because it's not just if you, as an employer, are sick, but also if we want to attract younger employees, they're going to have families, and kids get sick quite a bit. So I fully agree with you, and I fully agree with you that we have to remain competitive. We've sort of had that conversation across our work sessions today, so I really like this resolution and how we can compensate everyone fairly, sort of regardless of bargaining status.
And the important thing on that is that it's going to be done during fiscal year '23.
Yeah.
Doesn't affect this budget, it doesn't affect anything like that. And once we get a study and get that information back to us, we can best determine how to address these issues.
Mr. Bozen, have you had any conversation with Mr. Dunn about this and about what an outside company would do and what cost that might be?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay.
I wanted to bring it forth to see if there was interest in this council to move forward with it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I will second Mr. Greider here, completely in support of this. My favorite part about this is the transparency it'll provide to our citizens on what is happening throughout the entire process. So I'm very happy to see this, and I completely support it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions? Okay.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Bozen. May I have the motion, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? We are adjourned. Thank you.